All right, I would like to call the order of the March 12th Town Council meeting. I would like to welcome a newcomer to these meetings at the risk of embarrassing Mr. Ockery, Chuck Ockery. New resident in town, many people know Chuck or love Chuck, but he's coming to see Small Democracy, Small D Network, welcome you. And I'm not sure I-
John Ghevermont. John Ghevermont?
Ghevermont, yeah. All the best, Wendy and Gary, that's the seat back. Okay, let's... First order of business are the November 13 minutes. Any questions, comments? A little Marianne's usual editorial adjustments. Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve? One second. Phil and David. Treasurers' report, Mr. Gold.
Thank you. The total consolidated assets of the town of Washington is February 28, 2018, were $545,000. $545,700 is what I'm going to say. The, during that same period, the total consolidated assets of the Washington Water Works was $24,351.48, and the wastewater was $2,538.64. February water usage, we pumped 862,000 gallons, we backwashed 33,000, we missed 829,000 billable gallons, and we billed 594,192. We had no non-meter sales this month, so that left us with a total of 234,808 gallons treated but not yet billed. Income, February 2018 for the town of Washington was $19,454.88. For the Washington Water, it was $5,576.3, and the wastewater income was $8,387.10. Taxable bills to be paid, and additional bills to be paid. Nothing unusual in the bills to be paid, other than our quarterly BML insurance payment came through, $3,687.75, but I don't think there was anything unusual to do with that, but any questions would need be. Down the additional bills to be paid, the only unusual thing there was Baldwin's, we had to buy some diesel for our generators or even power pipes, and we had Baldwin's. As I say, we had that. That's all I have here.
Other questions? We've been routinely running about a million gallons a month pumping, and we've dropped 800,000. Any reason why we dropped 200,000 gallons in pump? No?
Just less usage, but we did have some leaks that we were pumping up there. It kind of comes out of whether we're filling the tank or we take a leak. The tank being almost empty, we just had a couple few hundred thousand gallons up there.
Last month, there were 200,000 gallons.
How much? 600,000 gallons a week last month, one gallon.
This is eight? Where?
It wasn't on the town side, it was on the homeowner's side. You weren't aware of it.
Do you know where those were?
Those prices. And then places you didn't know, we had more. If you go damage the house, rent out the backyard, and then spawn.
Any other questions? If one who have a motion to approve? One second. One second.
I'll say.
Phil and David? All right. Let me just add, during the eight months to date from last July, the town revenues are up 6%, of which meals and lodging is pretty even, and the other 12% or so is the water and wastewater revenue. And expenses are running about 10% less than last year. So we're running at a surplus of about $45,000 versus minus 20% this year, so expenses are mostly savings on wastewater operations and professional, which is legal. On the legal to remind, I think it was a year ago, a lot of time is being spent on the Avon Hall sales, probably was part of that. And we raised our rates. Yeah, and the rates of the water and the wastewater are running at 12, 13% increase over same time last year. So we're reasonably efficient. Planning Commission, correct? No reported this time. ARB. We've had one member, the ARB, I'm not sure when the next will be, I think it's this Wednesday, is meeting. But the big news from ARB is the very talented, fabulous, incredible Beverly Sullivan, designed from the board, and she was the longest-serving member of the board with the current board. And she just did an extraordinary job for which we will ever be appreciative, and I'm thinking of putting a statue up for her.
And she also served on the ARB.
And she, that's right. And if some of you are living on other planets, she is my wife. But there now is a vacancy. And rather than make a new business, let's just deal with it right now. There is a vacancy on the ARB. Anybody interested in coming on it, or being asked to join, approved to join, please email or send a letter by the Friday prior to the next meeting, which would be the sixth of eight. But if you're interested, you know, let us know, express some interest. Let me just mention, as I occasionally do, some news items, as it were. First of all, I want to thank, sometimes no news is great news. Some of you may have noticed that there was a storm that we did go on, and electricity went out and whatever. One thing that actually continued to function was the wastewater system and the water system, either of which could have given challenges of electricity, either of which could have had major challenges and created great problems. Unfortunately, that did not happen. And Jerry Gold did a lot of work with the current generators and such, keeping things functioning well, but it's one of those things that could have been really bad. Secondly, some of you have probably noticed that Mr. Abdo has missed fixing up one of his properties, the old pollen house on Main Street, which he's going to look to rent out. And when he finishes that, he's going to fix up the, what is referred to as the old rabahag news building, which he wants to rent out. And so both of those buildings have been, shall we say, disrepair, so it's great to have some action there. Once that happens, there will have been a total of 19 buildings on Main Street, 19, that have been substantially fixed up in the last three or four years. And on K Street, I think the number is 14. What's the point? I'm always reminded of something John McCarthy taught me when people were talking about doing business in town, and does someone have a business or not, and do they get an SUP, and they try that, or whatever. And McCarthy said, "I've been around a long time, what really matters is the building getting fixed up." Because there's nothing I can really do about how well someone's business works, but you constantly want a town where the infrastructure is being dramatically improved, restored, what have you. So it is significant that all of this is happening, and important. And on the subject of the post office, they are, as if they made public seeking bids, proposals by the end of March of this month, that seems to be a moving target. And there's several, we're making every effort we can to keep it in town at any one of several locations, and not too many locations, but several. And we'll keep everybody informed as we proceed. It's going to be a long process, I think. Mr. Bennett? Do you have anything, or did I ask you right there? All right, let's move on to public hearing. Open up a public hearing, consideration, adoption of an ordinance to grant modification to the existing Foster Harris House Special Use Permit Number 16-11-14, to allow up to two seatings of 10 persons each, or one seating of 10 is now authorized. Change the serving hours from 6:30 to 11:00 from the existing 6:30 to 11:00 to 6:00 to 11:00. And a change the name of the applicant owner to Peters Hospitality Management LLC. Klaus Peters spoke at the last meeting about what he hoped to do and why he wanted to do it, but I think Klaus, if you would give this to the public hearing, and a number of those people were not here, I think it'd be great if you could explain what it is you have in mind, and why you'd like to do it.
Good evening, I'm Klaus Peters. Thank you so much for coming here. I wish my wife would be here, because she really is the better part of this team, but she has been going through some challenges, she's had trying to communicate between Los Angeles and here, and she has a little issue today, so I told her, just relax, I'll pick you up, okay? But anyway, just to tell you about myself a little bit, I have been in hospitality business for 50 years. I started as a pudding officer in Germany. I retired eight years ago, and then I got tired of being retired. And for almost three years, I was looking for the perfect spot. I was looking for a beautiful, top-quality little bed and breakfast in a community that I would want to stay forever. I've been moving like 35 times in 50 years, managing hotels and living hotels, but I don't want to move anymore. So I had to find the right town, the right community that I would really enjoy and want to live for the rest of my life. But I found it. It is amazing. When I came here, the very minute I stepped into the Foster Harris House in August of 2016, I realized how comfortable it was. I made it through this, and I knew someone local people, and I was so impressed with the color of people here, how friendly they are. And it was not just during that time in 2016, but the entire time since I'm here, I've been coming both and back between Los Angeles and here. We moved permanently in Orlando, and I find the same thing, the attitude of the people is absolutely fantastic. Both Giselle, first, excuse me, Giselle for 40 years in Beverly Hills, when I told her about this beautiful little place in Washington, she always killed me, because she couldn't think of any place that she could possibly like between, among Beverly Hills, she loved it here. Not only because the area is so beautiful, but she loves the people here, and that's what we are all about. So in the meantime, we are truly operating a top-quality little place. We do serve dinners, and we provide excellent food and really personalized service. But our dining facility would be considered a special occasion kind of an operation. People come for their anniversaries or for their birthdays, and particularly the local people. So I thought that the way we like it here, wouldn't it be advantageous, not only for the Harris House, but also for the community, if we scaled down? Instead of having this special occasion kind of setup, where you have six or seven, of course, come in dinner, at quite a substantial price, if we scaled down, still offer excellent food and personalized service, but in a very, very small kind of setting, at a reasonable price, so that local people have an opportunity to come here to the Foster Harris House, not just on their birthday or anniversary, but to come there several times, whether it's a week, or a month, or whatever it is, that they really can consider it as another place where they will find excellent dining experience. So that was really the idea. The idea for me, when I acquired the Foster Harris House, this is not an investment for me to become rich or to build something up and then leave here. The idea was, I truly invested in a lifestyle, and this was what this is all about. I truly feel that I provided a quality operation that could be enjoyed by more of the local people. So therefore, I would appreciate if that modification would be approved. Another restaurant, I'm not going to be commercializing, but people come in and out, and they come from all over the place. It's extremely, still going to continue to be very small operations, that will cater particularly to our local residents here. Thank you very much. Did I hear someone up?
Yeah, well, I don't, the public hearing, we're not setting lessons, so, Dale?
I have two things here. Number one, of course, I'm a resident of across this, around the corner, and around one block from Klaus. I absolutely support the two seatings, it's only going to add to the community, to the entire community. But on a personal level, we've reconnected after 20 years. We used to work together. I know this man personally, professionally, and what he says he's going to do will be incredible. It's going to be phenomenal addition, having Klaus in Giselle, so, love you.
Jean?
I actually have a question, not a comment. With these two sitting, seatings, would one be the gourmet high-priced one, and the other one for residents, or how? I don't understand.
That's an excellent question, by the way. So I'm extremely conservative, not have one seating for one group and another seating for another, no. I may consider during the weekends still, for the people coming in, they're looking for the gourmet treat, but during the week, have two seatings, where we offer excellent food, dining experience, and very wonderful pasta. Does that answer your question?
Sort of.
Sort of, which part does it?
So that on the weekend, would there only be one seating?
No, two seatings.
But they would both be of the higher price?
Right.
Okay.
It would be, it's would be impossible to guarantee the quality if I were going to two different.
And on a weekday, that would be when you'd have two seatings of different prices?
Exactly. And particularly Tuesday, when you go here, you know, Jesus.
Audrey, Mr. Frank?
I'm Audrey Gregory. I don't live in the town, okay? You ask me, why am I here? I'm a bed and breakfast owner. I think this is a wonderful idea. I love the inn, it's wonderful, we've been there several times. And I also love Dulles, and River Grill, and all of those things, but this gives an option, an option of something in between those two. And I think it is a benefit to the town, it's a benefit to the county. I think that what money is made there is mine, and I would hope that you would feel the same way, and you would grant this to him.
Yes?
How many days a week would you need?
Five, please.
How many days a week would you need?
At least five.
What is your name, please?
Oh, Denver.
K Street.
Yes? I'm John Ghevermont. Again, I don't live in the town proper. We have Reality Farm and Keever Mount Winery, up in Get Brown Hollow, and I fully support this venue and Mr. Peters' efforts to bring a new business, or add to the businesses in town, and bring this quality and experience to the population at large here in the county. And I think to piggyback on what Audrey just mentioned, it's a business that flows to the rest of the county, to the other wineries, to the other B&Bs, and personally, at this point, it's my supper time, and I'm thinking about having a good meal, and Klaus is just kind of ringing my bell.
I love that idea.
Eddie? Right, Mr. Goode, former Town Councilman, Mr. Goode.
I don't want to rain on your parade, Klaus, but I have a lawyer-like problem with what you're planning. I have other problems with it as well. I think what we have to understand is that the Foster Harris House is in a residential zone in the town. It is not a zone for commercial businesses. And years ago, when B&Bs started coming to the town, our residents wanted to start B&Bs, we were very careful to make sure that it was an intrusion, it was not an intrusion on the residential quality of the neighborhood. And that has prevailed over the years. I think the most recent B&B was Marianne, and she went through a serious couple of hearings, and there were conditions put on her, opening her bed and breakfast. And suddenly, we've become not just bed and breakfast, but breakfast, bed and breakfast, lunch, and dinner. This ordinance amendment, it is written very broadly, and it's a nose under the tent in a residential zone. And without arguing those issues, just looking at the language of the ordinance, and the definition that accompanies the ordinance change, the ordinance says that the establishment may serve-
I'm sorry. Can you do what page you're dealing from, if you have it? When you said the ordinance, if you have a page, you don't have to tell us, but you do tell us.
Well, I've got a summary of it here.
Yeah, okay, okay. I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt.
But basically, it's, the ordinance amendment is under additional conditions for bed and breakfasts. It's where it is in the zoning ordinance. Then accompanying that was a new addition to the definition of a bed and breakfast. The ordinance, I can read it to you, it says, "By a separate and distinct special use permit, a bed and breakfast establishment may serve meals to guests and non-guests, but in no greater number for each meal seating than the number permitted rooms," which would be five, "times two," which would be 10. And that's how we came up with, you could serve no more than 10 people at a timing. Now, if you look at the definition, it says, "Not more than five rooms with no more than two persons per room, where meals are served only to persons who are overnight guests." Then it continues, "If permitted by a separate special use permit, such meals may be served to overnight guests or other non-overnight guests, but in no number for each meal than the number of permitted rooms times two." So we're still at 10. But it continues, "Meals are limited to one seating and include only one breakfast, one lunch, and one dinner per day." So you've got to deal with what's on the ordinance, and what you want to do, if you want to pursue it, I would suggest you need an ordinance amendment.
If I may ask, what would be the form of that ordinance amendment? In reference to the number of seats, or the zoning?
Well, I think-
You're making the initial questions of residential area.
I think the first thing you'd want to do is make the ordinance and the definition consistent. They're not consistent now. The ordinance speaks in terms of meals, and the definition brings in the term seating, one seating per meal. So I think that you, now, I defer to Mr. Bennett, who can interpret municipal ordinance as a lot better than I can, as to what the effect of the definition has on the language of the ordinance. The ordinance just says meals, and it says, "For each meal seating." But then the definition says, "There shall only be one seating per day for meal." So I think you've got an anomaly that needs to be resolved, unless Mr. Bennett can educate me that the definition isn't binding on the ordinance.
I'm sure we'll come back to you. Derek?
Sure, my friend, I first. Okay. So I wanted to ask, sort of following on from Ray, I was asking, Ray, I understand what you're saying about the zoning and the residential, and it's been a slippery slope to open it up to command. But it seems to me the Rubicon, if that's what it was, was crossed with the special use permit, which already allowed one seating of 10 people, five tables. What this is doing is not essentially changing it, not understanding your last comment, but it's saying, "We'll do that twice." It's not doubling up the numbers, you're not suddenly going to have 20, because it's 10 and 10, it's going to be sequential, so in terms of parking and things, it's going to be essentially the same, but I understand your point about that. But that door has been opened, that Pandora's box was already opened with the special use permit, so this is just adding one more sitting. The objection that you had, it surely had been tied to that, would have been the original decision to have a sitting?
Well, I think, I think the time to get into what we're doing, to the residential zoning in the town, would have been when this ordinance was adopted. After 11 years, I- After 11 years, I've stopped going regularly to town council meetings. And I thought what the McPhersons were proposing was that they would like to do meals on Saturday night. And I understood that there was going to be an amendment to the ordinance to allow a bed and breakfast to serve meals to non-guests, limited to the number of overnight guests allowed for that bed and breakfast, which is five rooms, two people per each room. But that's not what we got.
Now, I understand that, but that's history. I mean, we are where we are now and we have a sitting. So the question is not whether... Well, perhaps it is, but it seems to me that what's hate with it is not a question of whether we go back to having no seating. It's whether we add a second sequential sitting to what's already been agreed.
But my position on that is where you've got a definition that says that meals are limited to one seating and include only one dinner. That's what the definition says.
No, I understand that's what we're looking at, changing.
So if it's only allowed two seatings for each meal, you've got to change, at least you've got to change the definition. I mean, if the ordinance and the definitions are going to mean anything.
Mr. Rachel.
Yeah, I'm Gary Rachel, now living in the county, fairly, but used to be living here. I am reluctant to even stand up or be here tonight because this is a continuing conversation of several years. And I used to be over there and it wasn't easy. And now I'm over here and it's not easy. I think Ray raises a correct technicality that in any event, if we're going to move forward, if the council's going to move forward and extend the usage, it should be cleared up. I think this is a bad time for any public agency in this county to leave any technicality uncorrected, especially now that it's on the record. So I support Ray's interpretation that a definition in ordinance is indeed controlling of the language used in the ordinance. And at minimum, at this moment, it's controlling. So that would have to be replaced with a different ordinance, with different language in order to accommodate two cities on the same night. I've tracked this progression now over four or five years. It's not so much a slippery slope. It's been a very calculated slope with a lot of application of brake downhill. It's not picked up a lot of speed. We have two problems. We have a technical problem of zoning, which can be overcome by special use permit and variances, which Mr. Bennett, I would defer to Mr. Bennett's expertise on that, but there are legal ways to do that. But the larger problem is the character of the town. We're a very small town. We're all neighbors. We all like each other. In fact, sometimes even love each other. And then we get into some squabbles and that has the potential to divide us. We all wanted to accommodate the Foster Harris family, John and Diane. We all wanted to eat there. And yet, we have the problem that it's a B and B and only serves breakfast. At that time, there were two B and B owners sitting on council. So we were very well aware of the limitations in our special use permits of what we could do with food preparation. However, the initial accommodation was for their own guests. That was the original idea that was floated. Then it became impractical to have any kind of reasonably decent food establishment that didn't know whether they were going to be serving dinner that night or not. So it only seemed fair that if we were going to say that that particular establishment could serve dinners to their own guests, overnight guests, in order to make that practical, in order to actually make that happen, we would have to expand it so that if the overnight guests were not going to eat the meals that were being prepared, they could be sold to someone who was not an overnight guest. That was the original concept. Well, as that developed, that wasn't very practical either. So we began to see open table reservations. In my mind, it was still an attempt to accommodate a compromised position, a B and B in a residential area, that we wanted to encourage to serve meals, but not be a restaurant. And you'll all remember how difficult that conversation was to sort of split that difference of B and B that's permitted to serve meals, not just to their own guests, but to outside guests, and yet wasn't a restaurant. We sort of got close. And for a while, it helped. Now, I think if we really think about it, and I agree with the comment over here, if we like the idea of an additional opportunity in the county and in the town, it has to become practical. And I think Mr. Peters is saying that in order to have the quality of food continually available, both to outside guests and local guests, he needs two seatings to make that practical. So we have a bit of a dilemma. Do we go back and revisit the idea of B and Bs serving meals to outside guests in a residential area? Or do we say we're going to just continue and do the best we can to accommodate an establishment that we want to see serve meals? I hate to say it because I was on Ray's side for a long time. You may recall when I first came on council, I was very concerned about B and Bs in residential areas serving meals. However, I think that ship has sailed. For better or for worse, I believe the future of the town of Washington depends on encouraging appropriate commercial business activities. And if that means we lose more residents, much as I hate that idea, much as I hope we could build some new houses in town, much as I still hope we can encourage people to come and live here, I believe the future of the town depends on making prudent decisions that encourage people like Klaus to come and invest money, hire people, pay meals and lodging taxes. So I encourage the council to find a way forward to make it happen, but I would hope that it would be done in a way that could not be challenged because you didn't follow your own ordinances.
You want to come back up here?
Now you know why you got rid of me. That just took 10 minutes.
Well, that was relatively short. Uh, Mr. Pelican.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Klaus.
I am not a resident of the town of Washington, but I am a frequent visitor to restaurants, all of them in this town. This morning, when I opened up my computer, what pops up was Interesting Facts in Virginia. And one of the highlights went down and I happened to send it to the editor of the newspaper today. Interesting facts about small towns in Virginia, Panama. One popped up was the town of Little Washington, Virginia. The fact that it's a great place to come, highlighting its restaurants, the people who are here, and the pleasantness of coming to a small town and enjoying itself. I don't know if Klaus is expecting it to be a reservation only or walk-in off the street? Or what are your intentions? Is it going to be a reservation only?
Well, right now, it is reservation only because nobody's going to come to Washington, Virginia without a reservation. I haven't seen anybody, so right now it's all reservations.
Sure, right. And that works out.
I would believe that on weekends, if you continue with the gourmet dining, it will be reservations only. During the week, again, I'm trying to give something back to the community, a really comfortable, quality place. So if I have a space and a local partner comes in, they're going to be welcome in my dining stuff.
And one for the question then. Your guests have the right to make a reservation for dinner when they reserve their room, correct?
Yes.
So that automatically takes up one of those tables for the evening. Is that correct?
Exactly, right.
But if they do arrive and they have made a reservation and they wish to dine there and you're booked, they can, is that correct? They cannot.
That's a very good point, but of course, I contact every guest that makes a reservation. Our reservation, I come in advance and at that time, I'm already requiring whether they're planning to have a reservation.
That's a good point, okay. And I'm looking forward to dining often.
I love it. Thank you.
I want to just clarify. So you said during the week, not necessarily reservations.
Right.
Walk-ins are fine. If you have space, it's all about space.
You gotta have space.
Right.
The people come from the outside, they're in the reservation.
Right, sure.
But for local people, all of a sudden, you may have an unexpected visitor and, oh, let's let them have a nice dinner someplace and they come in and I have the space, of course I just come on in.
And would be a fixed amendment.
Right.
This is a practical question, it's not a legal question. Any... I'm not going to shut the public hearing off. You know it's raising your hand. Do any of you folks have thoughts coming? Yep, we're going to... John, are you ready to...
Yes.
...flax advocate?
I'm a little bit elder, but let me read some things from the ordinance. There's the general definition of bed and breakfast, which, as was pointed out, states certain only persons who are overnight guests. Now, that would be sort of the uses by right that a bed and breakfast could have, realizing that bed and breakfast requires a special use permit in the first place. And the town created sort of a subset for bed and breakfasts by further expanding what could be permitted in a bed and breakfast, but only by an additional and distinct special use permit. And that was embodied in section H six that was referred to. Let me just read this because it's a little tricky, but I think it'll be clear. "By a separate and distinct special use permit, a bed and breakfast establishment may serve meals to guests and non-guests, but in no greater number for each meal seating than the number permitted rooms times two." There's no limit on the number of seatings. And that's why the ordinance amendment in the form that it is is before council because it is consistent with the ordinance that council's already adopted in the form of H six.
Six one two, H six. Six five one, five two, H six.
And that, let me point out, that was a point of discussion at the very beginning of this. Does the ordinance accommodate something like this? Looked into that point before any application was submitted. But in my view, being the ordinance as a whole and that it's clear to me, at least, that the number of seatings has never been limited by council. However, the number at each seating is only... Now, if this were an application for 16, no more than 16, or no more than, let's say, 20 people, and how many seatings, that would not be permitted. But it is consistent with the ordinance by saying no more than 10 at each seating and then the number of seatings is specified.
Well, John, how do you square that with the definition?
Definition of...
The bed and breakfast.
Well, that is the general definition. The specific controls the general as a matter of statutory interpretation.
But it says, "If permitted by a special use permit," in the definition, after it says the basic definition, as it was previously in the ordinance, but then it was amended to add, "If permitted by a special use permit, such meals may be served to overnight guests."
Separate and distinct, which creates a more specific category than the general category of bed and breakfast.
Which is the special use permit that Klaus is applying for this evening?
Yes.
And it says, "Meals are limited to one seating and include only one dinner per day."
That's not the current ordinance that I have.
What?
That is not the current ordinance that I have. I'm reading, but it's not the date.
Well, I've got the zoning ordinance, May 14th, 2008.
And this is the 2014...
And the definition...
This is the 2014 version. It was updated since then.
It's the 2008 codification amended. And it shows the law that it doesn't include...
This is, this has been actioned by council. There's been, there's been a limit to that by council since the day that it was adopted.
I'm quite worried the amendment, do check out the...
Just what I just read, it's take out the no more than one seat.
Okay. When was that adopted?
Is that October 11th, 2010, or August 12th, 2013?
What's on the bottom? On the bottom, it says, I got the August 12th, 2013, Article six one two, H six. That's in there. It's here. John, are you referring to the one that says, "By a separate and distinct special use permit, a bed and breakfast establishment may serve meals to guests and non-guests, but in no greater number for each meal seating than the number permitted rooms?" Is that what you agree?
But no greater number for each meal seating than the number permitted rooms times two.
Times two. So are you saying that the for each meal seating means you can have more than one?
Yes, it's not...
Or...
It's by language. It's not limited. It implies more than one, if that were the case.
Or does that each meal seating refer to breakfast, lunch and dinner?
By, it's language, it's not limited by to breakfast, lunch and dinner, but implies more than one meal seating.
Mr. Rachel. Are you, can you tell the same?
Yeah. My memory may not be that good, but if it happened while I was sitting on council or while I was attending council regularly, as I believe it did, because it had to do with the application from the McPhersons, I think we'd better go back and check the minutes. I don't remember it ever being part of the discussion that multiple seatings for dinner was going to be within the presentation. And I do remember language, certainly we discussed language as council about breakfast, lunch and dinner, because I remember asking, is this just breakfast and dinner or would this also include lunches? And I think the answer we got was, no, it would be three males but one seating for each meal. That's my recollection. And I don't have, I probably could dig it out somewhere, but I would just recommend to the council, if there's disagreement or fuzziness, that maybe the minutes need to be checked. I have no reason to doubt that Mr. Bennett has accurate information. I just want to make sure that there's no chance it could unravel in any way once Mr. Peter sticks, gears up to serve multiple meals. Because this is, this is not the way I remember it being presented and it's not what I remember voting on, multiple seatings for dinner. But I could be wrong.
Well, that's the, under the rubric of legislative history, and while it does have a certain reference, the adopted ordinance, at the end of the day, is controlled. It's very controlled. We're getting very warrior in here, but that's what we're all looking for.
Yeah, just one. But you, you go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Yeah, actually, that was one point. Two things. First of all, as I was, as I'm al righ, I don't live in the county, married, all the other, that's beside the point. All the discussions so far has not been substantive about whether or not Mr. Peter should be able to have two seatings. It's all been tactical. And it's not as if you're going to be creating a lot of noise or having thousands of cars in your parking lot or making smoke or anything else. It's only procedural. As Mr. Bennett said, legislatively, what the words of the ordinance should statute are what control. And if there is legislative history, as long as the words are clear, which from what he said, I assume they are, that you can have multiple seatings, there's really no question what the council intended, because what they wrote is what rules. And that is a clear legal rule that is, I think, if there's an ambiguity in the statute, which the ordinance, which it seems to me there isn't, then you might go behind it. But if there is... But if there isn't, which I don't think there is, I don't think there's even any discussion as to what you intended to do.
On this particular line of flow, I mean...
Just, I would just remind the council that you've had one council member question the interpretation what seating meant. I defer to Mr. Rayner. If it's clear, what was passed trumps. It's, it's the definitive answer to the question. But if there's room for interpretation of what proceeding meant, and members of council believe proceeding means a seating for breakfast, a seating for lunch, and a seating for dinner, then there is room to interpret that particular ordinance. I'm not arguing one way or the other. I won't sue the town of Washington, no matter what. You have, you have my oath tonight in front of witnesses. However, I cannot vouch that for every member of our community. And so I simply want to be sure that if there's any doubt, as you perceive, that you cross your Ts, you dot your Is, so that Mr. Klaus can open in peace, Mr. Peter, Mr. Klaus can open in peace, and we can all dine in peace.
Well, let me just comment on that a bit. You know, it's, there's nothing said here, and even if, if you wanted to, you could breakfast, lunch, breakfast is by right for the B and B, so that would be screwed. But let's say you had to have additional seedings for lunch and dinner, but there's still nothing in this ordinance, the language of the ordinance supports the application, because again, it doesn't limit the number of seedings, and it doesn't limit them...
Doesn't the spending of time. If you want, more than one.
And you can have breakfast to be individual. I mean, you don't have one seating for all your guests are going to get up at the same time. I don't know, that doesn't make sense.
And then it goes on to, it can be permitted upon additional conditions, which included they're not limited to additional parking requirements, egress, egress, things that contemplate, if it were just three seedings in one day, why do you need to talk about additional parking? That implies something other than three seedings for just the Saturday. And again, once it is not limited to guests thumbed, dealing, as has been pointed out, with a different landscape as to each seating. I don't see these limitations in the ordinance. The language in my mind supports the application. It is a special use permit, it's a legislative action, but I insulted the adopter, not adopt it, on the merits of the application, considering the other required standards. And those relate to the protection of the value and the quiet enjoyment and property rights of the family and property owners.
Fred, you...
I was just...
Schramm will still come to you, Mr....
Go ahead, I'll defer to you. Member seven, Schramm.
Okay. My name is Schramm Proper. I was just thinking, the original time that was given to Martha Harris' house was six thirty to eleven, and that's like four and a half hours. Does it take one sitting of dinner, sit down and eat for four and a half hours? Does it, I was, I was Patrick, does that, does that normal for a sitting to be four and a half hours for one sitting? That's a long time, that sitting. For four and a half hours for one sitting? That's...
It's an equivalent.
I mean, so that's more than enough time, if you think about that. That's more than enough time to have two sittings. Because I can't imagine sitting at a table for four and a half hours.
Well...
But that's not...
Thank you. Mr. Walton. Yeah, I'm Bill Walton. Certainly, I live up on Rusher Village, just out of town. And it seems to me, the sense of the room, what Klaus is proposing is a very good thing for the town and the county. And we seem to be trying to reverse engineering, trying to shoehorn it into something that may have been decided three years ago, twenty years ago, fifty years ago. You know, where we are now, I would suggest the town council think through, if this is a good idea, to make sure that the existing language that governs the regulations fit what he wants to do.
I think that was considered before the application was filed. I think that was considered before the application was filed or accepted. That the language of the ordinance does support the application.
So, 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 seems like we're... I mean, to remind here, Mr. Bennett in his own, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Bennett in his own rule hasn't proved this as being legally acceptable. Now, one might debate whether it is or isn't, but it's been your conservative opinion that it is.
This, this was a question that was considered before this really got started, and was looked at, I looked at it as carefully as I could, and that's my view of the ordinance, which I think is fully supported, which I think is fully supported by the media of the ordinance.
John, I just want to ask you, did, and correct my memory, but did you make a recommendation as the zoning administrator?
The zoning administrator is charged with the duty upon request to interpret the ordinance. I have not issued the zoning administrator's opinion on this, none has been requested.
And who should request it typically? I thought it was just unperformed on...
Well, for sure, any interested party could submit a request as to interpretation of the ordinance as it may affect the property rights. Generally speaking, and I don't want to say that this is absolutely the case, but a lot of zoning administrators will entertain any zoning question from any resident of jurisdiction or anyone that's going to potentially have business with it by the ordinance within jurisdiction. But it's not necessary for a formal zoning administrator's input at this juncture. None hasn't been requested.
I'm sorry, I just remember John McCarthy always went in, if there was an application for a special use permit or something. In fact, he did it for, I think, John and Diane back in two thousand thirteen, but anyway, he wrote the summary with the facts, and then a recommendation, approval or disapproval, and why, and that's, I didn't know if we'd gotten that.
Yeah, that, no, I, I have not made any of the matters that have come up while I've been acting as zoning administrator. I've always thought, and this is just my personal view of the responsibilities of that office, that when it comes to the merits of a legislative action, that's particularly within the purview of the people that are elected, and a staff person such as me shouldn't be saying pass it or don't pass it. That's just my personal opinion. So, you all seem to be making a recommendation on any, any legislative matter that comes before council. Now, if you ask me a technical question about the ordinance, it's like the opinion on zoning administration.
And Fred?
Mr....
Go ahead, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I, I withdraw my, my concern and my opposition to the application, and regret that I didn't have the current copy of the zoning ordinance. I'm sorry.
Okay, listen. I'm just going to get it.
No, I'm not casting blame on anybody. I mean, I thought I had the current zoning ordinance. I didn't. But I think this underlines a need for the council to ask the planning commission to readdress this section, because we're on a really slippery slope. And there's a very fine line now between a bed and breakfast that can serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner to multiple seedings without any overnight guests being required to be present, and a restaurant. And a restaurant is not allowed in a village residential zone. And I would like to see that, that issue addressed by the planning commission.
That is a good idea. Are there other questions or comments? I may offer one or some. First of all, Ray, I mean, you were so well-respected, and don't, for whatever reason you had the wrong thing, don't worry about it. What you have provoked is a very good conversation, which is both an illegal one, but also a substantive one, kind of theoretical one. So, I don't think we, I wouldn't draw the conclusion we just wasted a whole lot of time because of a misunderstanding. And it's clear that there's some confusion. Here's where I come from. I happen to underwork big and then down. I strongly and always believed that this town needs more people, more economic activity, and for lack of a better word, more energy. And I think that also applies to county. And I think that providing products, or services, or facilities that bring more people to this county than this town is fundamentally a good idea. Also, something I feel very strongly about, and I've gotten in debates with Chris Parish and the board of supervisors. To me, the goal of tourism is not in and of itself that you generate two and a half percent meals and lodging tax, although you do, and we want it, and we need it. But that in and of itself is not what it's all about. To me, tourism in this county and this town allows people who live here and want to live here, with a certain kind of lifestyle, to succeed. And so to me, tourism means Joe and Sally and Fred and filling the blanks of people you know have a better opportunity to continue living here, and provide the kinds of services we want, and the kind of environment that we want. So, I just, if people talk about maintaining this county the way it is, one way to maintain it is have people continue to be able to work and live here. So this is one big, not the only way to do it. That's the big one. In terms of, then you want to do, we don't want to change the character of this town in some way, we want to continue eating. I personally think that whether it be persons or Klaus, that they've been providing a very good service that appeals to people, and the fact that they want to, or do want to expand, is a perfectly good idea, as long as it doesn't cause significant problems for neighbors, or parking, or, you know, all of a sudden dining gets defined as having song fests that go to two in the morning or something. So, in terms of the substance of it, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's good for this town. But then get into the legal aspect of it. I'm not a lawyer. From what I've heard, there clearly is some confusion in different paragraphs and different parts of our codes and zoning, which is also true of the county. And there are other parts in our ordinances that need to be cleaned up. And you might question, you know, one might have different opinions, but the, the view of our council suggests that he believes that we have every right to support this SUP, and that... We have every right to do it. So, given that long, I'm sorry to be windy, that we want to start in here and work it down, I haven't think it's a good idea, and I would propose, I would make a motion that we support this SUP. And welcome anybody else's, you know, conversations or thoughts on it. I don't mean to end the conversation, I'm just putting it out there.
I agree that, I find that there's support for this. I take to heart what Mr. Rayneri said about the difference between, in my words, protocol versus substance. Substantively, I think this is an important thing that would be beneficial to the town. But also, I hear what Mr. Achill says, and I'm wondering whether we can have something that would be a vote pending, allowing Mr. Bennett to have a chance to look back at the minutes, to look through, do one more search. If he finds nothing on board, then the vote stands. If you find something that is a question, then we can go ahead and revote at the April meeting. I'm sensitive that I don't, I'm feeling really uncomfortable that Mr. Peters is standing for like forty minutes now, and like a schoolboy, it's very prim and proper, and I don't want to have him come back for another meeting by postponing this, this whole thing, but I, I want to be sensitive that we are doing things absolutely correctly. But I also want to move ahead. I'd like to go ahead and make a vote, but I'd like to have, I don't know if this is possible, being the newbie on the town council, but I have a caveat that the town attorney finds something that is questionable in any way, that we make that, that a condition to null the vote and then revote after there's been a clarification and further study at the April meeting. I hope that makes sense.
Well, if I'm in, that makes a lot of sense, however, you can't do it.
That sounds like government.
Yeah, especially come up with a case that I have, I wanted to do that. Did a lot of research on it, couldn't find yea or nay in the black and white. So I spoke with some other, with some experienced governmental attorneys, I spoke with John Foody, who was county attorney in Prince William County, practices a lot of land use law in the private sector now, and he said absolutely positive, and no, you can't. I wanted to, I couldn't find any support for my position, so... The point of the view, then, you now, it's something, a conditional ordinance, you can say it expires at a certain day, expires at a certain day, but conditioned upon some other terms, except, you know, there's some exceptions to that, but it's good in the law.
On the conditions, sort of an expiration, are you talking, you're talking about the SUP? So that could begin at a certain time and expire, or be revisited?
Yes, that's, that's correct, although council has taken the view that while we review it at a certain point, that if there's no issues at that point, it continues. That's been the practice on SUPs at this point, because on the rationale to affect what is granted by the SUP requires investment and different change in position by the F A. But, so there's no problems at the review period, which typically here continues.
Yes, sir. Mr. Schneider.
I'm going to go back to...
I'm going to go back to several years back in various planning commission sessions, provisions. And in the various meetings, lots of discussion occurred regarding the various zones of town.
Village?
Village residential.
Residential.
Mixed residential, all those things. The Foster Harris House sits in village residential. We gave it an SUP to do something that really allowed. We said, okay, well, bend the rules. My concern is that we run into this where someone says, well, I can't get this, then I can't afford to do whatever I want to do. So the town sort of bends in order to help their business plan work, help their financials work. We got people saying, geez, if I can't get that extra room, I can't make this work. If I can't have the tourist home, I can't afford this property. So we tend to say okay to doing things in various zones that seem contradictory. And going back to those many, many meetings over different years in the planning commission, and Gary was really, you know, adept at understanding those zones pretty well. My fear is that we keep allowing things to occur by special use program. And so, you know, what happens to village residential? Then the next house comes along and says, oh, well, you did it here, I want to do this. We go into another part of the town, well, you did that over here, then I want to do this. And we keep, you know, allowing things to occur. And so the concern is what are we doing to the makeup of the community based on zoning basis? So I'm a little concerned about that because again, as Carolyn pointed out, we've started down the slippery slope, we've opened the door. So I don't know, and Mr. Bennetton's again, let us know whether we can or cannot do it. But my thinking is that we need to have good clarity in, for example, what is a restaurant? Because is Mr. Peters going to come back to us, you know, a year from now and say, oh, hey, things are just, you know, they're tight, it's really tough to make it, and I want to do this? Now is that really making Foster Harris House a restaurant and not really a B and B? Or a restaurant in village residential? Which is not permitted on the current zoning. So my concern is that we get into these situations and we keep sliding down the path. And some words, I think we need to, you know, put that stake in the ground and say, you know, okay, here's a clear definition. You know, certainly the end would never be, you know, reclassified as a B and B. It is clearly a restaurant. It is, and it has accommodations, but it's clearly a restaurant. It is in a zone that permits that. But I'm a little concerned, again, back to the days I worked in the planning commission head, that there was a lot of input, a lot of concern, how do we have our neighborhood, how do we have our community, you know, to promote some housing? I can remember some of the meetings, just the sheer suggestion of taking an open piece of land and putting new homes on it. We really went back and forth, there were some tussles of opinions. You know, we need growth, we need the town to keep on moving forward, we can't be static. But I'm thinking, one of the things that, whether this is approved or not approved, I think we definitely need better clarity. What is a restaurant? When does a B and B serving multiple meals, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, at multiple seating, now become a restaurant? And then if that's the case, even going back half a step to something you mentioned the other day throughout our last meeting, is if we're fine dining, then is there an ABC license required? Because I'm sure with fine dining, you would like to have a nice glass of wine. So where does that fall in in this multiple seating scenario? So there's another, I think there's another issue that sort of comes up that maybe outside of the towns rules and zoning and things like that, northern system. But like I said, I'm just a little concerned that this is happening. And I think, you know, we need to sort of protect the town so that when this application comes forward in whatever zoning district it is, that our definitions are clear. And, you know, because again, we're going to run into the situation where you allow it for someone else, how can you deny me? And so the fabric of the town starts to get little taters and starts wearing a little thin. So that's, and again, I'm going to defer to Mr. Bennett, whether definitions can be clarified and put in place that would not restrict the approval of this SUP modification, but that gives us, you know, clarity and better objectivity if we move forward.
Let me comment just very briefly about where the ordinance is now on the question of restaurants. And the only zoning district in which a restaurant is permitted is village services, which is essentially our commercial or it's our most intensive zoning classification. If you look at the zoning map, you know, the area in relation to the size of the town is very limited. And it's areas that have more activity or they're not purely necessarily purely residential areas. But so the zoning ordinance is clear that you can only have a restaurant by special use permit. You have, so I've got a special use permit. The only time you can have a restaurant is through the special use permit. You make all these findings that it's not going to injure adjoining properties or like their quiet enjoyment of property otherwise is in this village services district. Where's the line between a restaurant and what we're talking about tonight? In my mind, reading the ordinance, there is there is a bright line that if you serve food and if it's more than five percent of what you serve, it's a restaurant. And to me, that's a fairly tough, clear definition. But there's not much wiggle with it because, you know, you can't get into there and say, well, you know, the requirement is you have to have fifty percent of your seats from food. Well, that becomes more debatable, but the standard is very low here and very clear when it comes to restaurant. So in my mind, the definition of restaurant is pretty clear and pretty, you know, pretty enforceable and pretty tough. And then you have what's before council tonight, which can only occur as a jump to a B and B, which B and B for startups has to have a special use permit. And you have, the council has to consider all these standards about the impact on the surrounding properties and area and all of that. And as they say, every land use case is distinct and separate. But it's also said that to the extent that it's the same set of circumstances, everyone is treated the same. So sort of contradictory, but that's, in my mind, to the extent that you have identifiable characteristics, everybody should be treated the same. But there are special circumstances that can apply to certain properties and that's something to be considered. And that's why you have special use permits instead of uses by law. So only you have to have a special use permit for the B and B, and then you have to have this separate special use permit, separate process, separate application to consider increasing the meal service. And you have to go through the same findings legislatively as to the areas, surrounding properties, and all of that. And additionally, that section sets forth that you can impose all sorts of conditions to ensure that the impacts on the adjoining properties and the area are mitigated and minimized. So that's, if you look at the other sections, that's sort of an unusual set of provisions there that all those things are spelled out. So B and Bs are permitted by special use permit in this zoning classification. And that's why the applications here by some of this particular section. So in my mind, the definition of restaurant by the ordinance is clear, it's a tough definition and it's only permitted by special use permits in the highest zoning classification that the town has. And I think the only thing more easy to do would be to say you might not have a restaurant.
Well, I, oh, I'm sorry, Sharon.
Yeah, I haven't heard any neighbors objecting to clause. I mean, I haven't heard, I can't even quite follow what you're talking about. But I have heard one person say, we don't want Claus to have his restaurant. That he's going to wreck the neighborhood. I don't get this going on.
Mr. Bennett said this falls within the existing rules and regulations. And the council's supposed to think about it on its merits. It's a pretty good idea. So I don't know why they're still talking. It seems like if you want to have a discussion about restaurants versus B and Bs, that's a separate discussion for another day and another place.
But there's not a single person who lives around him who's objecting. And the ballons are moving out, so we can have another empty store in town.
And I don't think we've got Las Vegas on Main Street.
No, I think I'm prepared to close the public session instead of my conference. Everybody keep off the mouse, keep the party going.
I won't, I won't.
Does the public have anything else to say? Maybe you've been involved in this conference. To be clear, I just want to point out, the way we do it.
I will be there.
Let me just, I want to point out that the way we do like to do things here is we keep the public involved as much as possible and engage you all in a conversation, which I think is terribly important for how it's going to function somewhat.
Well, I don't think, I don't think I need to inform the public at all that we have probably within a radius of thirty miles, less than that, six very confined restaurants where your meal is over thirty dollars. You can get a less meal, but they're upscale restaurants, you pay for that. And most of them are open when we want them to be open. So there is competition and it's business. And for a restaurant to be open five nights a week or six nights a week with two seating, we have new restaurants that are opening up and try to do the same thing within a few months. I'm just concerned that Claus's restaurant, if a person calls him and makes a reservation and there's no other reservations made for the evening, is it fair for that restaurant to feed that one seating for the night when he's got a full staff and everything? I'm just worried about Claus having not the clients that he thinks he might have when I go to other restaurants during the week and I might be the only person there. Not in certain instances, of course, but when you make, I'm just concerned. Thank you.
Should we consider all that?
Yes, thank you.
So I'm one of at least two people here that are immediate neighbors of Claus's, Mr. Peters and we've considered the impact on our property and we'd be delighted to have him have a more enterprising business opportunity at restaurant there and hope it works well. We've eaten there in the past and look forward to eating there in the future. And I'm in the camp that also believes that the real issue that isn't quite being addressed is the issue of whether or not you want to have more commercial activity in the town, you want to have more residential activity. And that doesn't belong in this special use discussion, it seems to me.
Thank you. All right, I am going to close the public here. Unless someone's, that's what you're speaking of. Close. Now, if I recall correctly, I have on the floor made a motion to approve this S U P.
To consider that motion, the town the town has to first, you have to consider the special, the general conditions relating to special use permits.
Do we do that now or?
We have second.
Do we need a second vote?
I thought it was.
Would we restate the motion?
I haven't heard a statement.
I made a motion to approve the SUP which has been presented to us, which has been advertised, and which has been submitted to a public hearing. That's what I proposed.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, so before the council can consider that motion, there are general standards related to special use that the council has to consider under its ordinances and must find in the affirmative as to each one of these standards before the special use permit can be granted. If any one of these standards fails, the application for this particular special use permit will fail also. So how we've done it in the past, I'll lead it and I'll say, I'll say each of you and yea or nay, yes or no, whatever. Six one one, general standards. Town, don't invite the issue of special use permit if it defines that the use for which the permit is sought, A, will not be hazardous or injurious to or in conflict with the dominant character of the neighborhood considering the size and location of the use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved, the site layout, and access products. How say each of you?
Is that a roll call?
Roll call.
Yeah, yes.
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 Yeah.
B, will not adversely affect the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use. How say each of you?
Yes. I said.
Yes.
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 C, will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood or to the quiet enjoyment of property or improvements in the neighborhood. How say each of you?
Yes.
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 D, will be in accord with provisions of the ordinance and the plan of use and development of the body therein as well as in accord with such comprehensive plans or parts there are from time to time adopted by the governing body. How say each of you?
Yes.
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 Now, the ordinance under section six, one, two, H six allows the town council to impose additional conditions which may include, they're not limited to the major extent of onsite management, additional parking requirements, security rest requirements, periodic review of issuance, a longer timeframe. Then be re-applied for by that, but issuance restricts buildings to return owner at limitation of hours of serving meals. Guest and non-guest requirements for a minimum number of guests before meals may insert the non-guest noise standards and their lighting standards. Additional conditions may also be imposed, commonly established concerning meals only. So the original, this is in addition to the original special use permit that had requirements as to the lighting, parking, and hours of operation. The hours of operation are modified to add another half an hour. And then there's this proposition that's been discussed at length. So are there any motions relative to additional conditions specific to this application?
You want to know?
That would be no, if there are no.
You mean, are there any motions to, like, requiring to increase?
Yeah, any, any additional specific conditions.
The only one I'm hearing is on it.
Like the vehicle and that's a. Right. What about adding additional parking?
The, the.
Because it allows, right now it's for 10 cars. And if there's an overlap and somebody from one seating hasn't left, it might get.
I don't think the site permits more than, than spaces the way I looked at the site plan.
Could there be more space added to that? From a yard?
There's, there's space either front.
There's space on the street, street park.
There's just lots of.
I will, I would use my garage.
And you're using it now.
The existing permit requires 10 off-street parking spaces that have been established and consumed by the in addition to the apartments generally available on the street and otherwise.
So you think that's adequate?
Under these particular facts and circumstances, given the area and the amount of parking that may otherwise be on the streets that are immediately adjacent to this use, yes.
I have a question, was there a condition put on Pearson's permit for one year review?
There was.
Am I right to?
Am I right, election?
There was, I believe. There also was one put on Mr. Peters, Peter P. as well. It's definitely applied to this neighborhood, so. It is typical for us to do an S U P to put in a one-year review.
Yes. Then practice.
Well, I think that's a good idea. I mean, we typically do it.
Makes sense. So that would be, that'd be a motion to add the additional condition. Second.
Second.
Roll call vote on adding as an additional condition that there be a one-year review in accord with the practices that council has used in the other special use permit cases. And that is that if no problems are reported, the council reviews it itself and there's no action taken, but taking the special use permit is extended. If any problems are reported, the council would notify the owner and the matter would come before council for review. That would be the practice.
If, if there was a problem, it could not be resolved, would that be grounds to?
Cancel the.
Cancel the S U P or revoke it?
There, there, in the ordinance, there are provisions about the notification of planned special use permit.
My son wishes to have a birthright.
Sorry. Call your mother, turn her around.
Yes.
Short answer is yes.
Okay, so did you want, maybe the words for the second, do you want to vote on?
Vote on that.
Yes.
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 So now, let me just make sure in one of the. So those, those standards should be considered now, the vote would be properly considered on the motion, many motion to approve the amendment to special use permit with the additional amendment that there be one-year review.
Yes.
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 Well, here's quickly. Throughout our life, we make so many decisions, some of them excellent, some of them not so good. Coming here, making the decision to come to this beautiful town was the best decision I ever made. And I'm so grateful to the town council, I'm grateful for you coming here, spending your evening here to support me. And I'm not going to let you down. I can.
All right. Old Business. Uh, thank you, all of you who, thank you all who were here. Old Business Draft ordinance suggests P to P, otherwise known as Airbnb, updating possible authorization, public hearing. Fred slash John, do you want?
Yeah. We'd like to go ahead. Mr. Bennett and members of the planning commissioner, planning committee, at the planning commission meeting on 7:00 PM on March 26th, and hash out some last minute or some, some final differences that you may hash between us. At, through that meeting, you will present the final ordinance draft to the town council boards. Publication. That means we're deferring it to.
For another month. And then it'll come back next month and be authorized for public hearing. Can you put it in?
Yes.
All right. Next is the task force committees and appointments update. Brad, I'll turn that over to you as well.
I was asked at the last town council meeting to create kind of a process for going forward with each of the task force. So I've written up something that has been available to the public. How do we go forward? We already have the different task forces. Each of them has goals, very broad goals set up within their assignments. And there were the names that I was able to capture in brackets from the last meeting. Each of these task forces may want to be enhanced with additional membership. And I hope people will continue to volunteer to do so. The proposed task for each task force, the first one obviously is to identify and recruit task force members. And then I, I'm assuming everybody can read, so I'm not going to go through them in public. And if this is appropriate, this is a way for each of the task force to go forward. I think at this point, the only thing that needs to be done is to create someone to serve as, at least before the first meeting, to serve as a temporary chair to get things rolling. And then perhaps at the first meeting, they can elect a chair for that task force.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Are these tasks, are they going to be required to take minutes and have open meetings and be advertised?
If there's more than two.
Council members on each one, they have.
Or council two members, two officers of the town present.
If there are more than two.
No, if there's two, if there's just two.
If there's more than two. Two can be, two can be present, three can be.
Any officer, so if there's two PC members of the council present, it's a meeting.
So that's three, really?
Yep.
Who's going to be responsible for, will they have their own secretary that will take minutes? And will that person be responsible for getting the agenda to the newspaper and all of that?
Is that really, to what extent, these are good questions, to what extent? To what extent is this required?
Just minutes?
Well, yeah, all of this, I mean, it's, these are advisory groups. There's no responsibility in terms of able to implement something. So, yes, I mean, I, that's a question I don't have to answer to.
Yeah. The one, I mean, it depends on the composition. If they're composed of less than three officers of the town, so in town you have three officers, three or more officers of the town to go discuss anything that relates to the town, it is a meeting.
But if there's less than three, then it's not a meeting. And anybody can show up to it.
Show up, not as a member of the.
That was a question, Mark.
Yeah.
They can sit in the audience as long as they're not affected.
You know, that gets to be, that gets to be, that gets to be a question. You cannot purposely structure things in fashion like that. If it happens inadvertently and it has to be infrequently, then that's okay. But you cannot purposely structure things to avoid the freedom of information act by just showing up and not being a member of the town.
I think it would be good practice to have minutes from each of the task force meetings occurring anyway. In terms of, I think it would be very easy to set up the protocol. You know, part of the process of each of these task forces is that they should be doing work, but they should also be engaging the public whenever possible. So I, I feel, I use the model that the, that we had with the Adon Hall, where we were able to do some work in a small group. But then we also kept the public apprised at pivotal points along the process and kept them engaged. But we did keep informal notes so that we could remember what progress we made from meeting to meeting.
If I made comment about the minute requirements, the minutes are minutes. If the meeting was convened, present for so-and-so, we discussed the following, meeting was adjourned at so-and-so, in this case. So they can be, that's sort of fair bones, but it's acceptable. We can do more detail depending on the specifics of the meeting. You don't have to quote what everybody says or what.
My bad. What about the, the way they are right now, we do not have any task force that has more than two officials on. So I, I, I think to, you should still, you should still be letting people know that you're in a new meeting, you know? If you want, encourage people to come. I just want to know what my responsibilities are going to be in this part of the process. I mean, where are you going to be? I mean, I know you have to add these things out, but if it's going to be me that has to do things to a newspaper and stuff, I, I need to know.
Right.
Sometimes you barely make those deadlines. So just keep it in mind.
Well, I think it would be helpful to have, unless, I don't know, Mr. Rachel wants to say something, but before he talks.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have a three, two or three points of what are the necessary things that a task force needs to consider whenever the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that information would be very helpful.
Okay. I'll make a little.
John? I think I know the answer to my question, but I would like the ability to sit in on any one. But presumably that if there's already two people, two elected officials, that either A won't work or B, someone else just may not be there, not to A, or C, I don't know. But talk to them.
Yeah, I think it's the better practice, if a meeting is discussing governmental business and it's two people, or three people, or 25 people, it's better to give notice and let whoever is interested, because it's an open meeting, come here and, you know, direct them to speak, whatever.
But to remind, part of the purpose of this is to engage as many people as possible. It's, I mean, that is part of the, the notion of citizens to limit and to expand. Uh, Mr. Rachel.
Yeah, really briefly, just so people are clear, we, we really were very careful with the study group. They weren't task forces. We were not engaging in any decisional activity on the part of the town. We were information gatherers. We were collecting public information and we were trying to gather information from experts. At that point, there was some thought that, we were still careful. We were always clear who was coming and who was going to be present and who was going to be at the table. Those who wanted to have input, that we couldn't go over a certain number just to be ultra-safe, we canvassed opinions and it was shared by others, not them. But I'm wondering, Mr. Bennett, whether, if it's a task force and if they're conducting governmental business, and I don't think there's any question, there's got to be notice and minutes and you got to be very, very careful, in this county especially. But if they're not doing governmental transaction, that kind of substantive business, but in fact are simply gathering information or opinion, is there, does that still trigger the full public information? Simply because the, the person who's there is, is a, a public official, that's what does it?
Yes. Well, when you, it says town business, that's sort of the general standard, governmental business. And what is that? Well, I'd like to see the town bigger or, you know, let's clean up such and such street or let's do this or, you know, anytime you begin to express an opinion about anything or talk about it, and it's all construed against the government.
All right. That answers the question. All right, so.
May I ask a question?
You certainly can.
Okay, infrastructure, water. The department, or, well, the health department is going to require you to have a new well or just a new tank?
A new well.
A new well. Okay. I, I understand that the drilling, test drilling of wells has not been particularly successful.
Uh, we haven't even addressed that yet.
Okay, so is that something that the task force would take up? And to whom do you speak?
I do not see, the role of the task force, I think, is, they were originally envisioned is to look towards the future and to help provide suggestions to the town council about how to go forward in these five general areas. Come up with strategies as we go forward. So it was not to deal with the specific of where the well should be drilled or how the well should be drilled. That was not the role of the task force. As I envisioned, and I think the other members of the planning commission when we met, that was not our vision, that we would get down in that kind of detail.
And we do need a new well.
Right, and, I mean, af- after you get that far, that, that, that's a huge chunk of money. Plus, there's, there's funding available. Okay.
Can I sort of interject here, because that's one of the things I've, I mentioned to the mayor long before these task forces were even considered, that I wanted to do a comprehensive review of both our water and our sewer system. So, that review would be a historical review, you know, well, you know, for people who don't get that, kind of, how to come to be, where is it, and then what's our current status, what needs to be done to the water system, and then try to prioritize of some order, some of these things. For the wastewater plant, there are improvements, there are upgrades, there's things that need to be done, but rather than just sort of throw everything out there, just try to prioritize them, try to get an idea of what costs to not be involved in certain things, so that we can take certain steps. We may, I may come back, you know, talk to people and say, well, here's, here's a priority list. But based on financials, you might, you know, shift things around. So, what I was gonna undertake, again, was to try and do a perspective of where, where have we been, where are we today, and then where we need to look forward to the future. So, if it involves a well, what is our current status? What resources do we have in terms of potential site location, whatever? And then, if in fact we do need to, to start drilling a well, what would be the approximate cost? What is, maybe there'll be a little section of, you know, there has to be a siding, there has to be certain testing done, and then the actual cost to put the well in the ground, but then you'd say, well, what's it gonna cost to connect it to the rest of the system? So, there's a handful of those things that are all part of that.
And would Penney and Chute's system include your lights?
Well, well, we're gonna look at, I want, and then we're gonna look at all these things, because our lighting is all, uh, I've gotta try to pull together, for example, all the drawings, so that we have a, as comprehensive a set of drawings as possible, so we know everything is. Yeah, but I wanna bring that all together so that, again, it's organized, and some of, you need to go to it, you can go right to it. So, that's, that's all part of that process that I had envisioned. Again, this was before we talked about these task forces. Now, looking at this, you know, it's gonna expand, looking at sidewalks, off-street parking, off-street parking, you know, all these kinds of things that relates to the infrastructure.
Let me interrupt with a specific here, because I'm looking at the two of you. Um, today, I noticed that on the streets that are planned to be paved by VDOT, they have now circled, and you two, everybody, not excluding everybody that says, they've now circled where the...
Vauxhall.
Vauxhall.
Yeah, they were out there.
Which suggests that they're thinking of repaving the streets fairly soon, which A, we need to find out tomorrow, and B, we need to, as we've discussed before, uh, we should be taking photographs or doing whatever of every one of these streets, so we can see where things are before they get paid over.
Yes.
And, so they might be, and VDOT has record of giving you much warning, uh, before they start to do something. So, I'm talking to all of us here, we should call them along.
And I, and I agree with you in taking the picture.
Yeah.
But I do want you to know that, um, we have builder facing, and we have, have a border remain system, we have where the Vauxhall are on, on our plan.
Right.
Which is at country border. Um, and we have key plans of the waste work, where all the Vauxhalls are on paper. But I do agree that we need to go take the, I think that's a great idea. But just so everybody knows, there are plans available.
I'm sort of digressed with that, but that's sort of...
You know that it's a living meter, this is...
Anyway, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report. I'm thinking about my views.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, old business, council will consider possible expenditures and matters of support to broke town interest in connection with the planned in-stock celebration. Uh, we talked about this, uh, last month, there seemed to be general enthusiasm for doing something. Uh, it was left to be decided what that might be before anyone approved anything, and I will take the responsibility for not having, um, come up with specific alternatives on what that might be, and therefore suggest me to defer this to the next meeting, and there can be a specific proposal. That's acceptable. Um, second thing, somewhat related, I would like on the record, uh, that Patrick was kind enough to invite me as mayor, not because I'm a nice person, but as mayor, to be on the fortieth anniversary committee, which, dare I say, is one of those typical window dressing operations, at least that's what we used to do in my business, um, where you get...
Ex officio.
Names on, ex officio, you get names on a piece of paper. Um, I have nothing to do with the decisions they made, or anything financial, or what they're doing, I'm just, just there, but I think, I just want that on the record, that I don't know if anybody thinks or whatever. Uh, new business, uh, we need to schedule a budget workshop to remind working backwards... Oh, wait a second, Mr., I'd go back just for a second. Uh, Mr. April, I do not see your name on any of these advisory committee assignments. I was just recently informed that was an oversight. And, and, uh, well, we, I don't know, we might be coming after you.
Or down.
Uh, or you're not.
Oh, is that, I don't see him longer, too.
Well, it had just happened in the spur of the moment.
Okay.
But he's on the housing task force.
Yeah, well, that's where he should be.
What happens when you shut up in the ears?
Okay.
Well, don't worry, you have a problem.
It was gonna happen anyways, so don't worry. I mean, don't, don't, you know...
When you don't laugh too much.
Budget workshop to remind, we have a budget, uh, effective this July, we have to approve it in June, prior to approving it, we have to have a public hearing in May. In order to have a public hearing, we have to, uh, actually have a budget, which is always helpful. And that means that we need to have a budget workshop meeting as soon after the March thirty-first books close, which could be anytime immediately after April. I, for one, however, will not be in the country until April eighth, I guess, or to the Monday. And so we need to have, uh, work out something, and then we only have about a week between when the next council's, I have it right.
No, your next council meeting is on the ninth.
On the ninth, oh. Well, I get out of doing anything.
No, no. Why can't, why not go for the last week of March? And the book says where they are, I mean, it's not...
Yeah, okay, that makes no sense.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be...
And how about the beginning of the first week, of the last week of March?
Twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth, um, is that on the...
Yeah, I can't do that. I'm out of town, I'll be back. What, what time are you talking about? Usually in the morning.
It can be any time that we as a group, and I like the morning, but whenever we...
Mornings are difficult for me.
We need to get people in the room. Um, oh, wait a second, did I say the twenty-sixth? I mean, I, yeah, I'm actually way there, that's why I'm...
You're with that week?
No, 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 excuse me, excuse me, I misread something. I believe the Thursday of twenty-ninth. So, um, well, I need you to see, let's see that week. Speaking of myself, I can do any day, any time.
How much time does it require?
Couple hours.
We went through, didn't take us that long last time. Two, three hours?
It can take longer.
It can, yeah, it, it can take.
Patrick, what time do you need to be? What time do you start?
My day.
I don't wanna call it that.
That's about that. How much?
It would've been two, and dinner's at midnight, and...
How long, uh, mornings are difficult for me, so I'm trying to think early afternoon, and I know that you, you have more of a night owl schedule, so I don't impede on your...
My schedule never works with the council's schedule, so I'm used to adjusting at least. But you're in reference to the budget meeting?
Does early afternoon work for you?
Early afternoon is superior to early morning.
How about, I'm just running out of time, how about noon on the twenty-seventh, the Tuesday?
It works for me.
From one o'clock. Does noon work?
Twelve-thirty would work better.
All right, twelve-thirty.
On the twenty-seventh?
Yeah. And that being the case...
Too old.
We're gonna have... So, Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, twelve-thirty. Okay. Great. Um, last but not least, maybe last but least, books closer for a safety county for new water treatment. Well, this goes back to the fact that we have to do some things there. Me, OSHA requirements, ESS has been on the case. Brad has been looking into a particular aspect of it as a recommendation, and, and actually, does even require town council approval monetarily, I don't believe, it's under twenty-five hundred, but it is sort of good, uh, people aware of it, it's happening. It's sort of, it's no choice. And actually, but they, Brad has come up with, when we went through with ESS, different things to do, Brad has came up with a number of alternative ways of accomplishing the same goal with less money and stuff.
Here, here.
All right, that is it. Again, we'll open a public forum. Oh, we have, well, let's go. All favor of spending the, what's your name?
Well, I think you should, uh, because some of her, if it's, it all adds up to two thousand fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents, I think you should make it like two thousand, two hundred.
Two hundred.
Yeah.
Five hundred dollars.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
All favor. I'm gonna make a motion, second it, and then...
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
And who seconded? Have you seconded?
All right, I open the public forum. Oh, I'm sorry, you can tell I wanna move on.
I know, we're all tired, but...
Uh, roll call, I thought we did that.
Patrick, I guess.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, um, I open the public forum. Do I once, do I twice? I close the public forum, and, uh...
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, what you make?
I'll make it.
Second.